All right, Bannock County Commissioners are in session. I don't see any changes to the agenda, so our first item of business will be Commissioners' Report, Invoices and Credit Applications. I didn't see anything myself that I had concerns about.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Commissioners' Report. What else we got there?
Credit Card, Commissioners' Report and Invoices.
And Invoices.
There's one right under that.
What about these other, do I have to sign these others too?
Yeah. Sign down. Then that's it. The rest is for documentation.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. We have salary rate approval forms.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the salary rate approval forms.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an alcohol license.
Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the alcohol licenses.
And we have a memorandum giving an individual the authority to sign invoices.
Commissioner, so we have a motion for alcohol licenses.
Oh, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And now I move that we approve the accounts payable document.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Dan, you're up first.
Good morning, Dan Kendall, Facilities Director. Have a monthly update for July. Courtroom 320, we got the framing done. Electrician is getting started and all the wood molding has been ordered, so it's kind of a, kind of a wait period on those courtrooms. You get that wood ordered and then it's got to go through several contractors to get stained and finished and cut and all that stuff, so. But it's definitely making some progress on that courtroom.
Is the judge happy? There were some changes, right?
Yeah, we actually changed the bench up a little bit and compromised, and I think the ADA requirements look good on my side, and I think she's got the elevation, maybe not quite as much as she wanted, but we compromised the men in the middle, and I think it's going to be a really nice courtroom.
Yeah.
Yeah. Roden Bridge had some wind damage this month. One of their soffits actually kind of blew off and caved in, and we had that repaired. It's kind of been an ongoing battle. It's made kind of to protect the weather from coming down those garage doors, but it is to the age where they're starting to have a lot of water damage and that kind of thing, so. Part of it actually fell, and it was on a weekend thankfully, and got that patched back together, and we'll make sure we look at all the other ones to avoid that same problem, but it's kind of a flaw in the design, I think, and it's not super weather tight, so we'll have to make sure we keep an eye on it. Lander, we are removing any levers that have our master key system locks on them, so that when it goes up for sale, they'll just have a, just their own standard Home Depot key system and not have our master lock system over there. So we're just pulling the ones off, the cores out of the locks that we want to keep and just put a cheaper one on there for them, so. Trying to get everything of ours that we can get out of there and get ready for the auction, so.
Good.
As far as maintenance goes, we haven't had a lot of major breakdowns, just a minor rotor-ruder visit and a condenser that got a little plugged up, but other than that, everything's running good and it's, I was a little nervous with how hot it's gotten. Everything seems to be running good, but the only one, kind of right into the next thing, so we had, we've had an issue at planning and zoning for a long time. When we first remodeled that thing, we did it as plain Jane as we could. It's been 15 years, but I cannot get the upper floor to cool down, so I had one contractor go in there and fix what was there and try to make some improvements, but it wasn't enough to make a difference. We've had people on the second floor actually go home sick because they were so hot. I couldn't, on certain days, I couldn't get it under 80. And so I've added two small HVAC systems, one to each end, that only operate on the upper floor. So GIS will have their own remote that runs two heads, like a mini-split system, so they can run air conditioning up there and don't have to rely on the thermostat that's actually downstairs. And same thing on the other end, that conference room really messes things up, because you'll get so many people in there and that thermostat's in that room. It just cooks the emergency people upstairs and I cannot get it to cool down, so it's a permanent fix. There's never going to be another problem up there. There's no way. So anyways, talked to Kristi Klausert a little bit about funding sources on it, came in a little higher than I'd hoped, and she had some ideas of how to pay for it.
So we're talking just over $34,000. Dan was going to try and cover it using his capital acquisition monies. However, those monies are getting a little bit tight and I'm not sure if he's going to have enough. So I was hoping the board would allow us to use PILT and we'll reallocate more of the jail boiler. Money's over and we should be getting that final bill on the jail boiler any day now. Seth was sending that over to ICRA. I think we'll have plenty of funds, but if we could pay that out of PILT, I think that's a better use of those one-time dollars. And if you approve it, I have a reallocation letter, just in case.
Okay. Any questions?
It's $34,000 for the whole thing, and you don't need all the money or you want to use all the PILT money?
No, I just need to use $34,321 of the PILT money.
And that's the total cost to do this project? Okay.
Good. I don't have any problem with that.
I don't have any problem with it.
I'm going to have to do a formal resolution, and if you would also sign this invoice, then we can get that processed and get that done. The coding will be the same as that letter. I just didn't know if you were going to approve it, so I didn't want to anticipate any coding on it.
But 80 degrees, just the normal temperature in some of the offices down by me.
Uh-oh, that's not good.
No, that's.
As I say, come to my office until he fixed it. It was about 60.
Wes said it was actually like closer to 85 on some days, and it's just been a battle for a long time with just something we need to get taken care of.
No, I just give a couple of them a bad time about running their heaters during the summer.
It is, it is a battle. There was, there's one other thing that came up, and we've never really budgeted for it, but there's a five-year elevator test, and they actually, the state comes in and actually puts, you know, your elevator will say rated for 1,500 pounds. Well, they actually put 1,500 pounds in there and they run it and test it, they test the alarm. But it's only ever five years and we've never budgeted for it, and Kristi thought maybe instead of absorbing and taking money out of every other line item that I have, maybe we could be more creative and paying for that one. But it's two elevators and it's $7,500 to do those two inspections. I don't know why we can't do the three elevators all at the same time, but they, they won't, so.
And the third elevator's elections?
Actually, we're doing elections in the ADA elevator now.
Okay.
And then we'll do the other one when it's due, but tried to get it so they're all on the same deadline, but they won't move the deadline. But this thing's been due for a while, they keep putting this off, but the state's working with us and they're coming next month, so I visited with Kristi for a minute.
And where do you want to fund it out of?
Contingency, and then what we'll do is get it on the cycle and start budgeting for it within the department in the upcoming years, but because this is kind of unanticipated with the transition, not knowing the timeframe, it really wasn't budgeted for and it might make his budget short. So when the invoice comes in, if approved, then we'll just pay it out of contingency, and I just need the majority of the Commissioners to sign off on it as a contingency invoice.
Questions?
And then this is, this is good for five years? We don't have this again?
And then Dan will make a note in the budget to anticipate for it in five years and include it as part of the budget request, so we're not doing that again.
Okay. Motion for that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we go ahead and approve this expense through contingency.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 So when you get that invoice, just bring it to me. I'll code it and get authorization on it.
Thank you for your help. Appreciate that. Thank you, guys, that's all I have for you today.
All right.
Thank you.
Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioner Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer with a procurement update for the board today. We want to start at the top with the accessories remodel for the, what I'm calling the storefront that we talked about. That went live at 10 o'clock or will go live at 10 o'clock this morning. Along with that one, we also had two other ones in far, in regards to the remodel go live. The first one is the ceiling, that went live Tuesday, and the lighting went live on Monday. So those, Dan and I talk about them as dominoes, they are currently toppling over Justice Plant, so that's a great progress on that project. The other two that went live last week, the fire suppression and the HVAC, we held pre-bid meetings this week on. The pre-bid meeting for the fire suppression, we had no contractors attend. We weren't completely surprised to not have anyone, because we did attach the remodel design that we had as part of the bid, so they have the information of what we're doing, and we're also requiring that they get their own design team put together as part of the bid. That is kind of general practice for fire suppression, is that that contractor works directly with their design team to be able to submit those designs to the state, so that relationship is really close, that we've built it that way. So we weren't completely surprised when nobody showed up, but that is still moving forward. They still have the capability of asking questions, and those are due tomorrow at noon. On the HVAC though, we did have three companies attend that one, and I was educated and got to see the roof of the annex building and the attic there, and they were all very patient with me, and I appreciate that. But we got that one done, and they are also, have questions due tomorrow at noon, those two lined up. We had, if you moved down to the detention center on the cement polishing, we held a pre-bid meeting on that one yesterday. We had a single contractor show up to that one and was able to go back and take measurements back in. We are polishing back actually in the detention pods themselves, so that was a feat, and we appreciated the transferring of inmates to a different room that we needed to, but we did get contractors through that project, and those questions are due on Monday for that project. In regards to security cameras, we had questions due this week on that one. We did receive quite a bit of clarification that contractors would like to see, and so we're working through that, and that addendum will be issued today by 5:00. The final one I wanted to review was the detention center landscaping. We did receive no bids on that and canceled the project. The two things I wanted to review was that I did touch base with the sheriff, and he said that the jail was not annexed into the city. So then they're going to move forward with the project. I said fantastic, and they're reviewing the bid that I received via email, and they'll look and see exactly how they want to move forward, and we'll get something back before the board hopefully next week.
So Hal, in that annexation, the jail is still county and not part of the annexation? Is that so, that we still pay out-of-state, out-of-city fees? It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be part of the city, it's county property, but anyway. All right.
They're looking and reviewing, and they'll get plan back before the board here shortly.
Okay, good, good. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And then, Dan, one item for you. Braden showed me the pictures of the damage up at the event center.
Oh, yes.
The wall, the building, or the, ah, what is it?
And the concessions of the current stands.
Concessions area. Were they backed into it with a tractor or truck, trailer? And damaged gas line and stuff. We need to turn that over to risk management, and we don't need to pay for it from county funds, that should be all their insurance, that should pay for that. Shouldn't be the county.
I'm just thinking, we'll need to work with risk management, because sometimes ICRA will pay the claim and then get the money back, so we just need to see how that's going to flow, because if that's going to be.
And I asked Braden to get with him. Thank you. All right, looks like Hal, you're up.
Paul Jensen, Planning Director with Bannock County. I have with me Tristan Borquen, Assistant Director. I will turn the time over to Tristan, she'll give you an update on status of comprehensive plan and also the reason why she's, or we are requesting a signature on this particular vendor profile.
So we have been working on our updated draft of the comprehensive plan over the last few weeks, and as I was doing some research of other counties, I noticed Madison County has been redoing theirs, and they took theirs to the county fair to get feedback, and I thought that was a really great idea to get people involved and get comments and public input for the second round of the comprehensive plan. And so we are here before you to get a signature on a vendor agreement, to have a booth at the county fair for August 5th through the 10th, and we'll just have a couple of team members at the booth, and we'll have the draft comment box and the new future land use map there for people to make comments on before we do final edits and take it to public hearing.
I'll be invited. Commissioner Crowder, come be at your booth, he likes being down there at the booth.
Is there food at the booth?
If you would like to bring food.
Hey, if you're delivering free food, I'm there.
Any questions, concerns?
No.
A motion?
There's no cost for this thing, right?
Correct.
Go down there and set up, yeah.
That's what we're saying here, isn't it? There's no cost.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this agreement to have a booth at the county fair.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
While I'm sitting here, would you like any clarification relative to your previous question?
I just kind of being smart, I like that.
Do I need to decide, or just you?
Either way, I mean, you can find your data if you want. So two of us are there, said it.
It was left under county jurisdiction to avoid confusion in emergency response situations because it was in the city of Pocatello, they would actually have first 911, and anyway, that's why that decision was made.
So, for clarification, as we're talking about this, if we do any construction out there, it's a county building permit?
Goes through my office.
Okay, then how come this building is not the same way?
Because.
It's county property also.
It is in the city of Pocatello. If you wanted to have this taken out of the city of Pocatello jurisdiction, then you'd have to request that de-annexation.
So the event center and wellness complex are not in the city of Pocatello?
They're still in the county as well.
Well, after the problems out there on Sixth Street, I'm not sure, we don't want to de-annex this building from Pocatello.
Okay.
The village, the, everything the county owns. It hasn't been a pleasant journey.
Which brings me to the next discussion. We'll be on an agenda possibly in a week to talk about county-owned properties within the city that makes sense to be deeded over to the city rather than us retaining deed ownership.
That'd be a good conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Dylan, you're up.
Good morning, Dylan Evans, Landfill Manager. Do we want to start with the Pine Ridge Mall or do we want to do the recycling one first?
I'll start with the recycling.
Okay. So I was reached out to by Republic Waste Services. They were going to try and purchase Western Recycling, which is our cardboard, tin and plastics. They were unable to close the deal and it kind of went a weird direction, and then Republic actually went to the city of Pocatello and said, here are your two options, stop doing recycling, or you guys purchase the building and do the baling yourselves. So with that having gone on, with the fallout and everything, it actually moved really quickly, so beginning August 1st, they want to begin charging us for our single-stream recycling that we take to them. So if you look at the chart here, they would charge 35 ton, a ton for baling, 25 ton to ship, and then 103.50 for the final sorting and transportation that Republic would take care of, and then they would offset that cost by what the value of the recycling was going to be, and then she put down, it fluctuates a bunch, but ballpark was about 25 to $30 a ton that would offset, which would bring our cost to roughly 135 to 140 dollars a ton. We only take them about six or seven tons a month, so I mean, you're looking at 72 to 84 tons a year, and that would cost in the ballpark of like 10 to 15,000 dollars to the county. So I was bringing that before you guys to see what your thoughts were on if we want to proceed.
If you do that, do you have money to absorb in this year's budget? It's going to be a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, it'd be.
But something to think about.
Right, and then.
And then next year's budget we can adjust for, because we're in the middle of that process.
Right.
But we don't have the abilities to adjust this year's budget.
Right.
Well, guess we don't have to recycle.
Well, that's, I went and met with Tom Kirkman about it and went over some of the fine details. They're really passionate about it, but we have a way above average recycling.
Who's really passionate about it?
The city council, Pocatello City Council.
Passionate about?
They moved, they moved really, really quickly on this, something that would have taken them months and months to get through all the paperwork and process they did in about six weeks, he told me. And our, Pocatello's capture rate for recycling is something like 77% of the national average is like 30, so they feel really strongly that they want to keep the curbside pickup for Pocatello itself, but that doesn't mean that we have to continue with our portion of the recycling project.
And how's our recycling set up?
So we have three bins, one in the McCammon Transfer Station and two in the Pocatello yard just past our scale house there, and it's free service, that's just sitting on the ground, and then once a week, we take that recycling to what was Western Recycling and drop them off.
Well, stuff that's not going in the landfill, I mean, that's a positive bend of it.
But it sounds pretty costly, so they're, we're paying to recycle.
Not currently, but we would come 1st of August.
Honestly, I'd like to kind of see how much we accumulate.
And that was.
What the actual costs are going to be.
That was the historical for the last year, was about 67 tons a month, so. But the, the problem is the, what is the recycled value at when you go to offset your cost? What I understand, it moves quite a bit.
Yeah.
So it, it's, yeah, I was thinking it's probably going to be more. I, the original figure that I looked at was about $12,000 for what they projected for, but it could be a little less or it could be more too, so it's kind of a tough one.
So what about Pacific?
I don't know if they do any cardboard. I know that they do tin and plastic.
In the past, they did cardboard.
Maybe they still do.
I, I bundled cardboard up at ON and delivered down there.
I don't know.
They paid, paid us for it, we never paid them.
And I don't know if that would, they do their own internal and they do all their hauling and sorting and everything. I know that this, this is actually through Republic Services and they have their, their MRF and Boise that they take it to and sort through.
I think that we ought to talk to Pacific and see, you know, that's another option for us.
Okay.
Honestly, maybe they'll pay us instead of us pay them.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the payment part that we're going to be paying for is the sorting, because right now our bins, we just put everything in except for glass, and so it has to go to the station, get sorted out and split to then figure the reimbursement amount. So that's where the cost comes in, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, but if Pacific would offer that, then it would be.
It's worth the conversation.
Yeah.
See what they.
Absolutely.
What they have out there. I gotta quit saying some things I said. We have a jail out there. Anyway, let's, let's talk with Pacific and see if there's anything there, or at least see what direction we can end up.
Yeah.
Okay?
Absolutely.
All right, next step.
All right.
Pine Ridge.
Pine Ridge Mall.
Braden, you want to read or you want me to start?
So.
Go ahead and start it off.
Just from this sheet, you figure that the disposal fee that we'd be giving away is just under $300,000.
Um, that is what they're projecting. I don't find that to be completely accurate based upon the contractors we've dealt with in the past. I think that these are fairly optimistic.
You think this is low?
I think this is low.
Very, very low.
What do you think's a more realistic number?
I would think you're probably looking at about 50 to 100,000 more dollars. It just depends on how good they do for the demolition portion of it. So the majority of this stuff can go to sell three at the reduced cost, but you're looking at $7 difference. So if you're going to put an extra hour on an excavator and an extra hour on a worker, it's more costly than $7. So a lot of times contractors will kind of take their dirtier loads and just say, those ones are going to four, and the obvious ones, the brick and stuff like that would be easy to go to sell three, because it's going to have to get handled anyway. So the, the low, you know, 116 tons to sell four for the entirety of that building, I don't find to be very realistic.
And then, Anita, come on up, please.
So quick clarification for my, for myself and on behalf of the clerk. The ask is a waiver of all or part of the 300 to 350,000? Is that what the ask is?
That's my understanding.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and read Jeff's letter. Jeff's not here today, he's the one that's been involved with this a lot, and so he sent a letter, let's read it.
All right, so I've got a letter from Commissioner Huff here. My fellow commissioners, I'd like to stand in support of, is it Simon Crease?
I think so.
Was it?
CRE.
CRE's request for a waiver of landfill fees relating to their project at the Pine Ridge Mall based upon the following reasons. First, I traveled to their home office a few weeks ago with Bannock Development's CEO to verify the validity of the project. During that meeting, I learned the victory, the history of the Pine Ridge Mall and how it has arrived at its current state. They reviewed the proposed plan and shared with me their proposed agreements with two significant retailers to occupy the renovated space. In reviewing the information and their operation, I feel they represent a legitimate opportunity to revitalize a critical area of our community. Second, I have visited with our landfill manager and I reviewed the submittal, or submitted disposal amounts based on those conversations. I feel the amount requested does not put an excessive burden on our current operation or the life of the landfill. While visiting with CRE, they assured me they were willing to work with the landfill to accommodate schedules and amounts of debris. In light of this information, I believe this is a project we can support with minimal impact to our daily operations. And third, this is a project that will benefit the entire county. Many people throughout the county travel to Pocatello for shopping. Revitalizing and updating the mall like CRE is proposing will provide new shopping opportunities, more jobs, and allow more of Bannock County's dollars to stay within Bannock County. As a county, it is our job to help the economic development efforts. As a county, it is our job to help the economic development efforts and I believe this project fulfills that duty. Sincerely, Commissioner Jeff Huff.
Okay. So, I don't know. To answer that question, I don't know what they're asking. A total fee, ask or partial or so, but I did visit with Anita and, and I asked, so how long would it take Bennett County to recoup three hundred thousand and maybe four hundred thousand dollars?
This is an urban development, so Bennett County's not going to recoup that money until that urban closes.
That, that's why she's here.
Sorry, Anita, I spoke for you.
That's why she's here, is because I wanted this stuff on the record. Go ahead, Anita.
Okay, well, so in an urban renewal area, of course, we only get tax dollars on the base, not the income. That goes to the, the TIF. So this year, because we've visited with the owners of the new Pine Ridge Mall, we have lowered the value a little bit. They came in and talked to our appraiser and did some things and we lowered their value based on what they're telling us of demolition and different aspects of it. So we lowered their value, which in turn lowered the base. And so what happens now is we're going to lose some tax dollars there and to recoup that, like Kristy said, it could be at least twenty years before we can recoup that. So, because I can't, the base never changes. Once I lower that base, I mean, there are some circumstances where it could increase, but those are, I've actually never seen it in the years I've been here with urbans. So, once that base decreases, there is no way to increase it back to recoup those tax dollars.
And, and we reduced it, I mean, they was going to appeal through the process and, and it was about six million dollars that it was reduced.
It was, yeah, yes.
And, okay. So honestly, where I'm at right now is I would like Commissioner Huff to be here to, so he can have that conversation about percentages or what we're asking for a total ask or, or percentages and so I would like to put this on the docket for next Tuesday.
Perfect. And he did clarify, he said they are asking for a total fee waiver.
A fee waiver. Devin?
Can I come up and have a little bit of kind of background info from the city of Chubak? We've been working with them for quite a few years.
You can, I don't usually allow that in a public hearing like this, but because of the, you're here and I mean, we're going to postpone this anyway, but we'll get some information.
Quick clarification, because the landfill is an enterprise fund, they don't receive property tax dollars anyways, so even if the value is added back eventually when the urban closes, the landfill won't recruit, recoup that three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fees if those are waived through any sort of property tax add-back on later on. So a, a full fee waiver would definitely impact expansion requirements, filling space, those kinds of things, just so that that's on the record.
Thank you. Devin?
Thanks, Commissioners. Devin Hillen, Community Services Director for the city of Chubak, Building Department, Planning Department, Economic Development and Parks. I'm also up until sixteen days ago, the prior Urban Renewal Director for the city of Chubak as well. This has been a project that we've been working on for about eight years. I think all of us are aware that the, the mall has suffered quite a bit since, over the last ten, fifteen years, that's a lot, a lot, lost a lot of business. You drive over there right now and it's completely empty parking lots. Everyone really is suffering. This is one, the retailer that they have coming in is one that the community's been asking for, for a number of years, that truly with this redevelopment, they will be coming before us likely and asking for a waiver of building permit fees, which I am sure will be far in excess of kind of four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars between plan review and stuff on our end, which the mayor and I are going to support. This project will pay dividends throughout the community. They're planning on doing the demolition, they're planning on rebuilding a significant area of square footage space and doing some outbuildings to move existing mall tenants into buildings into the, into the existing commercial parking lot areas. So they're going to do quite a bit of infill compared to where they're at, so we're going to see an increased densification of commercial valuation on that site. It is within an urban renewal area. That district was stood up in 2015, so it only has about eleven years left. And within those eleven years, there is a bond. That bond is in the process of getting paid off, it's likely it'll get paid off a bit well with a decrease in valuation. The bond may, may not get paid off, it was a risk the bond investors took, but in 2020, 2035, that district will close. So those monies will come back on to the tax rolls and I believe will be substantially more than they are paying, especially now with the decrease in the value. And like Commissioner Huff mentioned, this project will keep monies right now that are currently going to idle funds.
Okay. Questions?
Nope.
All right, it's on our agenda for Tuesday. When Jeff's here, we can have that conversation.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Got it.
All right, with that being said, we are adjourned.